On his way, so I do note that his tenant is not here but I won't put an apology for him because he is on his way in and should be in in a few moments. Um declarations of interest in matters on the agenda today, do we have any declarations? No, we'll move on to business outstanding and there's no business outstanding. So we move on to the first item which is the confirmation of minutes. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on the minutes? No, in that case I will move uh that the minutes of the meeting held on the 2nd of September 2021 be confirmed. Thank you very much councillor Fekner. Any discussion? There being no discussion, I put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Note, all those in attendance have voted, so it's carried. Has it? So would someone like to move in an adjournment before you?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. So just note that, Vicky? Thank you. Uh move on to item two, which is the procurement. Uh it's a delegation of the CEA to enter into a contract for supply of electricity for large contestable sites. May I ask the relevant council officer to the lectern please?
Richard White, manager of procurement.
Thank you very much. Um Mr White, this looks to be the standard one that we have for electricity, is there anything in this that you'd like to bring to our attention? Or is it of high risk or anything like that?
Two points I guess, if given the moment to speak. Um we're continuing to utilise our bulk buying power with local buys. It's one of the times when we can really secure um value for council via using local buy. Essentially joining with other councils to pool our buying power. Um because this is a commodity that's fairly standard, so we get the best price we can. Obviously however, the energy market as it is, prices only last for a short amount of time, so we have to get pre-approval. The second I would say is that this is continuing to buy electricity how we have bought electricity in the past. Um we do expect in the next twelve months or so, I know sustainability has been brought up to council. Um and there are discussions going on regarding that, that this is still coal power. This is still how we've always bought electricity and I do expect we'll probably have to revise this at some point during the life of the contract. Um but we've continued as is at the moment while we're waiting for that strategic direction, I guess. Power has to stay on, so in the meantime, this is how we're bought and this is how the other councils are buying at the moment as well. Um but I do expect that in time, we'll probably be coming back to look at something more complex.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr White? No, thank you, Mr White. I'll move recommendations A, B and C together. Do I have a second? Yes councillor Quinsman, thank you. I'll leave it open for discussion. There being no discussion, I put a recommendation A, B and C to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. And everyone in the room has voted in the affirmative, and so it's carried. We move on to item three. Which is the proposed disposal of the council asset, the Marburg Sulky. Would anyone like to ask the, shall I ask for the relevant council officer to come to the lectern please? And the recommendation here is that the council endorse the disposal of the Marburg Sulky by donating this asset to the Marburg and District Residents' Association. May I see your name and your title?
Um Mary Torres, acting manager, infrastructure strategy.
Right. Um Ms Torres, in the report, the council have made recommendations for storage and display. Um if council does deem to donate this zoki to the Marburg and District Residents' Association. Um do they have any obligation to maintain the asset in that way? Or it's completely their obligation to how they do that?
Okay, um if we as a council determine to donate the asset, then it's no longer a council asset. So they can do as they wish with it. So we do not have an obligation to maintain it or continue to store it in the manner that we thought was appropriate.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Councillor Quinsman?
And Ms Torres, by passing it over to them, we cease to have an obligation in relation to this asset?
Yes, that's correct, because it's no longer a council asset.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms Torres? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'll move this recommendation. Put that council endorsed the disposal of the Marburg Sulky by donating this asset to the Marburg and District Residents' Association. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Mulligan. Although I have a discussion, welcome councillor Tully. We're up to item three, the Marburg Sulky, which you probably have some memories of as well. Um I'll open up for any discussion. Councillor Quinsman?
Uh Mary, as you know, we were out at Marburg the other night with the residents association. And they're very happy to have, to accept this asset. And that then it becomes their problem. Sorry.
No, I guess in discussion, when I saw this paper, I asked council a couple of questions and one of them was just details on the procurement. Obviously the community is very keen on Tuesday night with the Marburg and District Residents' Association. They've said they're very keen to take on the asset and we can see in the report, there is a number of letters from them to council. Um I was just querying the restoration of the dates and how that happened. So the work was specialist in nature, is what's been reported to me. And only limited suppliers were approached with this project. So both suppliers were not local to Ipswich and the one from Gimpy was deemed value for money. And I believe that the original purchase order was open for that supplier in May 2018. But obviously the work was done in 2019 and so on. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried, thank you. Item four is the curb and channel sub-programme, project prioritisation methodology. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? No? Okay, well I will move this and do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Um would anyone like to discuss this report? No? In that case, I put the recommendation that the methodology is outlined in the report by the senior engineer. Date of the 10th of September 2021 for prioritising the future capital improvement projects in the curb and channel sub-programme. Of the council's capital works portfolio be endorsed, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We'll move on to item five, which is the infrastructure environment department capital delivery report of August 2021. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern please? May I please write your name and your job title?
Yeah, good morning Graham Martin, manager, capital delivery branch.
Thank you, Mr Martin. Um thank you very much for another exceptional month in capital delivery. It's great to see that and I'm getting a lot of compliments from residents that they've ever seen so many roadworks happening in Ipswich, it's great to see. Um another one I see is the bus stops.
Yes.
And I think we had a question about, there used to be a contract with Umedia or Adshell. Um are they still installing those bus stops or how does council do that now?
No, currently that contract has expired, it's completed, shouldn't say expired, yeah, that's completed their task. And the new bus stops now being completed by council.
Thank you. Um we also talk about in that report, the Riverview and Rosewood Resource Recovery Centres.
Yes.
Do you mind giving us an update on how that, how those milestones are going and when will be delivered?
Uh for the, just a second, let me grab my notes out. Uh at this stage, we only have milestones in place for the Rosewood transfer station. Um and those are, we've got a timeline to complete by the twenty, in March 2024. Um although we haven't commenced the investigations yet, we're looking at a three-month timeline to do initial investigations for geotechnical assessment. Um and then depending on where we see that, that should take the three months. Planning approvals would then be a further six months on top of that. Um we don't anticipate to be there any major hiccups there, we'll be looking for land that's appropriately located. Um detailed design, looking for about six months to go through that six detailed design process. Construction over twelve months and contingency. Construction over twelve months and contingency for a further six months after that. Um so it's getting to be a um not a tight timeline yet, but we're starting to chew up into a little bit of contingency at the moment, so we're still on track to achieve what we want to achieve there. Um but we will need to make sure that we get the geo-tech investigations underway relatively soon so that we don't miss any of those later milestones and put ourselves under a tighter timeline for some of the planning areas in case there's a delay.
When will we have timelines for the Riverview Resource Recovery Centre?
Uh we'll look to have those for the next report, which will be before the end of September, report that'll come up here to this committee.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr Martin? Yes, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks very much, just in relation to those Adshell bus shelters, so we're responsible for the maintenance of them now.
Going forward, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and we're getting the income from the advertising on them.
I can't, sorry, I can't tell you what's happening with the income on looking at the capital delivery, but I don't know what's happening with the the contract for the revenue, sorry.
Right, so that could be still through Adshell or 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 um some, another company now?
Yeah, I have to take that under advisement to be honest, I'm not sure what the initial agreements were under that contract, but we can certainly find that out and report back.
If you do that, that'd be great.
Yes, please, please. Graeme, is it worth, I do have some information that Adshell may be continuing to maintain the sites that formed part of their initial contract? Is that what you had said?
Uh I I haven't been involved in the commercial
Yep.
negotiations of what is the ongoing requirements, yeah, so Yeah, I can't
Shall we come back?
Yeah, I can come back with the terms of the contract and what's happening with those without any problem.
That's great, thanks, Graeme.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Ireland? If it's not a question, I'll wait until other questions, okay. Any other questions, Mr Martin? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Um I'll, so we can go into discussion, I'll move that report, do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Questions and discussion, councillor Ireland?
On page one hundred and sixty nine, um asset rehabilitation, could you just take out the planes? It's Brisbane Road, Red Bank, I think, because we don't have a Brisbane Road and Red Bank planes.
That's page one five nine rather than Page one five nine?
Asset rehabilitation.
Yes.
Uh roadworks at Brisbane Road, I think that should be Red Bank.
Red Bank, not Red Bank planes. I'll just get you to note that, so you're to remove that. Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion on this report? No? In that case, I'm put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried, thank you. We now move on to item six, which is the exercise of delegation report. Does anyone have any questions, the relevant council officer? No, in that case, I will move this report. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Quinsman. I now open up for any discussion or comments. There being no discussion or comments, I've put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. Now go on to the final matter, which is the planning environment court action status report. Um do we have any? Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions? No, in that case I move this report, do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Quinsman. I now open up for questions and discussions or comments. There being none, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. It's carry, it's unanimous and carried. We have nil notices of motion, we have no matters arising and we don't have any procedural motions or formal matters. So this um meeting, I'm closing at nine sixteen, and only the next meeting is on in ten minutes. Thank you very much.